Want to welcome you to the October 13, 2021, study session prior to our board meeting. And we're going to first start off with our detailed annual financial report by Mrs. Lana Berry.
Madam President, members of the Board, tonight during our first work session, we're going to talk about the annual financial report. This is the final report from fiscal year 2020, 2021. So we'll go over all of the expenditures and then wrap up with what the financial highlights of that mean. And then we'll go over any questions that you have related to the information that's attached. And then you'll have an action item at the very end towards the or in the middle of the board meeting tonight that will ask you to approve the annual financial report. So four things, we're going to educate you on and give you some updates on the revenues and expenditures from fiscal year 2021. We're going to go over the district's financial health and why the AFR is important and how we utilize that. And then we're going to discuss the alignment to the actual journey 2025, especially under the areas of effective resource management. And then later this evening, you'll be asked as a board to approve the annual financial report, which is a requirement by statute to have it done by October 15. Now, I want to let you know that Heather Caviar is the main person who pulls this together along with Lauren Randall. They're two of our staff members that are incredible. There's other members, Ben Frost helps pull things together, but Heather and Lauren have done a fantastic job there of my right-hand people, and they've done a great job this year pulling everything together. So we rely on them, and I appreciate all of their hard work over the last year, but especially on the standard financial report. So a couple of things, the annual financial report captures data, June, it's really from our fiscal year of July 1 through June 30. We have an encumbrance period, which means we get to pay our bills and ultimately receive revenues all the way for a period of time, July and August of the into the next fiscal year. And ultimately, we pay bills and we accept revenues during that period of time. A lot of our grants are finished 90 days typically afterwards, and we finish those completion reports by typically by September 30 unless we've asked for an extension. And all of this is a requirement by statute, which is the Arizona revised statute 15-904. And that's why you, as a board, are required to approve it in an annual board meeting after a presentation is given. Now, the auditor general is the one who guides us. They are the ones that produce the form and give us guidance on that. Again, it's based on statute, interpreted through the auditor general's office and given to us. And then we all fill out this form so that we're universal, so that you can compare us in a sense, AFR to AFR throughout the district. And then you'll see the classroom site fund report that gets produced in February that's based on this information. So we'll share that with you as a board. You can go back and look at all the previous years by looking at the classroom dollar report. You can always go look at an AFR. They're posted out there on the website also. So why is this report important? It's a number of things. It's a measuring tool for our journey 2025. We use a couple of those pieces for it, but also it gauges our fiscal health of our school district. It captures expenditures, revenues, transfers, for example, from our federal funds into our indirect cost funds. It allows us to create the financials for our auditors. They use this. This is our general ledger is what gets produced in the annual financial report. It helps us know where we financially, the health of our district is. It helps us make sure that we've coded things correctly. We've made sure that all of our funds were aligned with what they were supposed to be. So we do a lot of cleanup during the last few months. We do it all year long, but we really do it at the end to make sure that everything is accounted for accurately or at the best of our ability. There's always pieces that, you know, there's little codes that could be updated and adjusted, but we, you know, a lot of times we're able to clean up all of that, make sure everything is accounted for accurately. We look at trends and potential issues that are coming for the next fiscal year. We can make those in the revision. And then it helps us calculate our indirect costs for the next fiscal year. So all of those are extremely important. Who uses this? Obviously, we use it. Chandler Unified uses it. Our bondholders use it when they're looking at our ratings and when we're issuing bonds. Our district auditors use it to create the CAFR, which is the Conference of Annual Financial Report. The Arizona Department of Education uses it. State superintendent puts that out in his annual report or her annual report, depending on which one it is. And then stakeholders can use it to verify information so that we show every single expenditure that has happened through our general ledger, and they can take a look at that. It's very transparent. The general auditor general's office uses it so they can compare all of our peer groups and compare the state. And that's that classroom site report that you see from me every year and that you can take a look at that I think is extremely helpful. And then the state superintendent, and he uses that or she, I should say she, she uses that to submit off to the national to Washington to report Arizona's information, and then we can compare that. So a lot of people use it. It's a great report. So this year, right off the bat, in the very beginning of your annual financial report, the first thing that you look for after the cover sheet is the revenue section of the the report. So a couple of things that you're going to see is that in 1920, we do a comparison. I always do this when I show you one year versus the next year. In 2019, 2020, we brought in an MNO, which is our largest fund, our maintenance and operations fund, $308 million. And you can see last year, we brought $306 million in. So why was that less? Especially because the governor's 20 by 2020 was in the last phase of it. There was inflation, different pieces in there. However, you remember there was a loss of ADM. So therefore, we're on current year funding. So therefore, with a reduction of staff, that's why you see a reduction overall in the amount of revenue received and the difference between those two. Capital was an increase. Now, the reason for the capital was the restoration of district capital. So that's why we received more money. We were in the fourth year or fifth year of being restored. Actually, I'm sorry, fourth year of being restored this year, the one we're in operating now is the fifth year of restoration. So we're almost back to 100% this year. We're finally at 100%, but that's why you see the difference in the revenues for capital. Adjacent ways was different. We had asked for adjacent ways last year, less this year that we're operating in. But last year, we asked for more because we were finishing and starting Rice and the high school. And so those adjacent ways costs that we had put in place in 2020 versus 1920. And then debt service is slightly up overall as we have issued our bonds and the payment for those 2019 bonds and the issuance of those. So that's why that is an increase. So ultimately, you can take the revenues minus the expenditures plus the fund transfers, and that gives you your ending cash balance when you're doing, if you want to do the math on that, when you're looking over those sheets. Gives a little cheat sheet of how to do that. First off, I'd like to just talk about the tax rate just a little bit because we always recap on that. We set our tax rate all the way back in the previous year in the summer for that for the fiscal year. We've tried to keep our tax rate as flat as you can see as possible. We did have a big increase back right here in 1314, going into 1415. That's when we went from an override from 15% to, I'm from 10% to 15%. And we had a large amount of adjacent ways back then when we were building Castile and Auxera Elementary. That's why there was a big jump. And then it went back down because adjacent ways you have to pay off in one year. So that increased it. That was the big change during that year. But you can see our tax rate have stayed very flat throughout the years. And as you all know, we have an override election coming up on November the 2. It's a continuation of the existing override, no new tax, a continuation. We expect that tax rate to stay flat. Lot of misinformation out there about a tax increase, absolutely not a tax increase. We've had a continuation. We've had an override in place for three decades. The only difference was back when we went from a 10% to a 15%. All right. The other thing I wanted to note was that secondary evaluation or overall secondary assessed value, that's $4 million. One of the things that we did years ago was in EFRG, our Education Finance Reform Group, was we were capped at the amount that we could spend on bonds. We could only use 10% of our assessed value. And so we got to a point where a 10% at one point was almost the amount of our assessed value with the amount that we had outstanding for bonds. And so EFRG, the Joel Worth was part of that, was went out and asked our legislatures to increase that to 20%. They did. And so we've been able to bond, and our voters have approved that over the years. So I just, that was a great effort that took place and we were able to do a few years ago. Historical assessed values and tax rates. You're going to see some of those as they go up and they go down. We don't control the qualifying tax rate. The state legislature sets that every single year. So a lot of times what happens is if your assessed values go up in your school district, then the qualifying tax rate and across the state, I should say, if the assessed value goes up, then that qualifying tax rate goes down. And then the opposite should happen. If the assessed value goes down, the qualifying tax rate goes up. That makes an adjustment. So you can see some of that has taken place as the Great Recession took place. Assessed value was going up, and then as it went down, remember assessed values are a little bit behind regular values that took place more, even though the Great Recession took place in eight and nine. You saw that assessed values went down a few years after that. They were a little bit behind back then. And so you see that increase in that tax rate. And then for us, depending on our primary tax, and if we've had adjacent ways, that's impacted us slightly also. So tax rate changes, I've kind of mentioned that. But ultimately, if we increase assessed values, then typically we decrease the tax rate. That's set because of that qualifying tax rate that takes place. It's set to a limit of you can't exceed that by 5%. If your gross of your assessed value goes up by 5%, you're limited to that. So if it grows up by 10, you're going to be set at only five. There is some caps on that. And impact aid, or I'm sorry, adjacent ways impacts the primary tax, and that is what you, as the board, have been approving as we go forward when we're building new schools. We're replacing some of our bus lanes and some of those areas across our district. That does make a slight impact to our primary tax. The secondary tax, which has bonds and overrides in it, we have put in a strategic measure to make sure that we don't go up or down. We try to keep it as flat as possible. So that's why we have refinanced bonds, or we have also been very strategic about when we sell them and how much we sell, and then how long it takes us to pay that off. So we keep that tax rate as flat as possible. And that's why you saw the tax rate that was presented earlier. Now, the expenditures, once you start pages two through nine in the annual financial report, you're going to see, and if you want, we do a comparison to the year before because in your annual financial report, there's information about budget year versus actual and then prior year. So that's information to compare when you're looking at that. Total expenditures for levy funds, which are your tax funds. Your maintenance and operations was $298 million, and that is was down compared to 1920. Again, a couple of things, our ADM was down, but also we had federal funds and specific things. And also, we didn't do quite as much, right? We weren't operating at the very beginning of the year in person. So those expenditures were down. If you look at transportation alone, you can see that change compared to budget. So there were some of those expenditures, but mostly to do with ADM and then limited services at some points during the school year. And then activities, for example, that we didn't have maybe afterwards during that period of time. Capital is compared overall went up. We spent more money in capital, and a part of that was the technology purchases that we had last year compared to the previous year. That was a big spend for us to make sure that kids were eligible and had computers during the virtual environment. And so that's the main reason we spent more in capital last year than the prior year. Adjacent ways went up because of the new high school with ACP and also with Reg's Elementary School, or I'm sorry, Rice Elementary School. And then classroom site fund was up overall on expenditures due to the amount that we paid out as part of their contracts and their salaries, and then also with their performance pay staying at $3,200. The total expenditures overall, gaming was down. One thing, if you remember, we pulled out the portion for gaming, thinking that we would wait to see if we needed that for the future related to the amount that we gave out to schools. We gave out approximately $20,000 K through 12. We didn't do that this past year. It is something that Frank Narducci is going to deploy to schools to help them along with their SIR funds, so it can be a plan to sustain some of the services we will be able to give kids over the next three to four years. And you, as a board, will see a revision in December that allows us to use some of that gaming funds this upcoming year. He'll be able to talk to principals after tonight's meeting about that, and he'll be able to deploy some of that gaming funding again. State and federal amounts are up. That's your federal grants. Those are up because of all of the SIR money, the Enrollment Stability Grant money, obviously a big influx related to all of the federal dollars. And then other funds overall down compared to fiscal year 1920, but that's also because of community ed's budget slightly down. There's other funding sources, for example, tax credit that you're going to see a slide on, and others in those cash funds were down. Now, the bonds and SFB money and adjacent ways were drastically up compared to the previous year. For example, we spent $90 million in bonds last year. The previous year, we spent around $27 million. So a big difference mostly related to our bonds and then money coming in due to from the school facilities boards for our new schools. So historical, I like these expenditure charts because I think it helps explain a few things. When you just take in the same amount of money that we get compared to if you're up in Page or down in Yuma, the same amount that we receive for levy funds for maintenance and operations, Prop 301, which is your classroom site fund, Indian Gaming money, which is money that comes in from the casinos for each of our, for per student, and then our capital money that we get for K through 12 for capital items. Those four funds, everyone gets the same amount. There's a few discrepancies based on weighted counts of students and a few other things. But ultimately, we receive the same amount of base support. You can see that increase in 2009, 2010, when the Great Recession hit, we were right around $6,041. It had dropped down to $5,862. And now you can see we've been climbing and climbing. So there have been some dollars, and we're very appreciative. We got, we have a legislator in the House tonight that's been helpful with that and a lot of, especially legislators in our district who've been extremely supportive of getting us more money in our school district. And so we have increased that. You can see at the bottom, we have $7,805 that we are receiving in a sense in expenditures ultimately for the four levy funds. That's increased. Prop 123 was a big portion of that. Also, the governor's 20 by 2020, inflation, and some of the other expenditures that have been part of that. Now, if we add on to that the amount of just the four funds plus federal programs and all of our cash funds, which is civic center, gifts and donations, and then Title I, the Enrollment Stability Grant, SIR money, all of those funds on top of the four that we just discussed, you're going to see that our amount has increased by about $600 or I should say a little over, yeah, $600 per pupil since last fiscal year. Most of that is because we received additional money from the Enrollment Stability Grant and from SIR. That's the biggest change, a small amount of increase in MNO related to the governor's 20 by 2020, inflation, and a few other things. But really, that bigger change was due to the federal dollars that came in. The next slide shows a big difference. And once we add all of the state funding formulas with MNO, capital, Indian Gaming, and Prop 301, and then you add those federal and all the cash funds, and then you add in our debt service, which pays off our bonds, you add in adjacent ways, the school facilities board money for new schools, and you add in, for example, the $90 million last year that we spent on bonds, and you divide that total amount divided by the number of students or ADM that we have, we spent $12,719. Now, that's an increase of approximately $1,700 per pupil. But the reason for that is, like I told you before, we spent $90 million in bond funding compared to the prior year, we were at $27 million. The major difference with that was related to bond funds. If I took out bonds, if I took out MNO override, if I took out the debt service amount that we paid for the bonds, we would be at around $8,600 if you take out all of those pieces. MNO, history of our MNO and ADM, we had, for years, we'd been increasing in our ADM, and you're going to hear later on our presentation related to our demographics in our district. We had had an increase in our ADM, and we saw a decrease last year with our ADM. You can start to see that as we go through here, and we're going to go over that in depth in the next presentation. This is a chart that we have brought to our board every single year. It shows the increase of student population as we go down. This was our first year that you have seen, that we've brought to you, where we actually have a decrease in our average daily membership of over 1,800 students. So that was a decrease of approximately 4.1%. We added a school last year. We added Rice Elementary to the mix last year. There are a few other things that we've added over the past, not last year, but in the past, that aren't necessarily schools. So sometimes when you look at programs like the Chandler Learning Center, that it gets reported underneath Hill Academy, for example, so it's not a school. So when you're looking at those, some of our schools, Hill Academy is reported underneath our high schools. And so they're, they get distributed throughout our schools, and they're not identified as an individual school. So sometimes when you count those up, we have 31 elementaries, six junior highs, six high schools, and Chandler Online. So that's how you get to our number of schools. The number of teachers, we're up to 2,500 teachers. We have 119 administrators. Now, part of the increase in the administrators where we added deans a couple of years ago. That was why we saw the increase in 1718 to 1819. We added deans and assistant principals during that period of time. And then some of the increase that we saw in the last couple of years not, weren't necessarily new positions, but reclassification of where people fit and their title on there. Some were new and some were reclassifications as we did a study and went through that in our HR department. And then the total number of staff actually decreased last year. Most of the reason, we had given out contracts for our certified staff, so that did not change last year because that came out in the spring. However, we had less members in our community education department, less members in our food service department, partly due to employment pieces. We had to shrink our community education department at the beginning as we didn't have students who were in before or after school care. So that's why you see a reduction. It's mostly in those cash fund areas or in hard-to-fill areas related to bus drivers and food service, community ed, something that you're seeing again this year. So overall, there's another chart that I think is extremely important. You can start to see our MNO expenditures. As we increase in our average daily membership, the number of students that we have, you see that our average daily or MNO expenditures have increased over the years. And last year, we spent slightly less than we did prior to the year, but we had 1,800 less students last year, as you can recall too. So a slight decrease in the overall expenditures. Our utilities, there's a note on utilities. Our utilities didn't necessarily go down. However, one thing we did was we had additional money in our E-Rate funds, and we moved our eligible expenditures, not just for one year, but some of our other expenditures for the district with the additional money we had carried over from previous years to make sure we could carry over the appropriate amount in MNO. So we made a large adjustment in our E-Rate to clear out some of the funds within our E-Rate account. So that's why we did a big journal entry from maintenance and operations and put it into our E-Rate fund. The amount percentage for MNO is approximately for utilities around 3%. And then the amount for salaries and benefits is approximately 87%. You can see that that adjustment made a slight one. But overall, we're spending almost a majority of our budget, and we talk about that on a, on a daily basis. Most of our MNO expenditures are based in salaries and benefits. So MNO breakdown, have, you took all the amount that we spent last year since our largest fund, 72% got spent either on direct instruction, the teacher, the paraprofessional, the supplies are in that classroom, and also the student support and the instructional support. So that goes from our counselors, our librarians, our nurses, our speech pathologists, all of the people who impact the students, the professional development that happens for the teachers, that whole amount, all of those areas, that is 72.61%. We spent 10% on administration, and that not only includes, for example, Frank Narducci's position, my position, the cabinet's position, but that is all of our schools' principals and their admin assistants. That's our payroll department, our HR department, our purchasing department, our warehouse, our business office, our technology department, all get included in that piece. And then 17.19% was on other, and that's people like our transportation department. Our maintenance and grounds department are in that category. Capital expenditures, we've been very fortunate to get the restoration of district additional assistance, which is capital. It had, that formula has not been updated, so we're still getting the same amount, I believe, that we got back from 1980. But during the Great Recession, capital was cut. So that was a huge cut, and we were having to take maintenance and operations dollars, I was just talking to Mrs. Bruner about that, taking MNO money from that pot and having to move it over to capital for a few years during the Great Recession and during when they reduced our capital to fund some of our capital needs. We don't have to do that anymore. We are almost restored. Last year was our fourth year of being almost completely restored. And so you're starting to see the increase in expenditures within our capital budget. We're up to $14 million. We get, last year, we received about $17 million in, and we spent 14, so we're close to that expenditure amount. We have some rollover in that for our different areas, but ultimately, we're getting closer and closer to the amount expenditures that we are, that we get in revenues now. Outstanding debt, this is for our current bonds. As you know, we had bond elections in 2006, 2010, again in 2015, and then again in 2019. So this is the current outstanding debt. I had talked to you earlier about, we had changed legislation to where we could take the assessed value, and it's not just, allows us to just take 10% anymore. We can now take 20% of our assessed value. That happened previously where we lobbied for that, and that's made a huge impact in our district so that we could build the schools that we have in place now, especially over the last five years. So we're way under capacity. We have, we could actually access about 800,000 or $800 million. Our bond outstanding bond debt is about $354 million. Classroom site fund, that amount has gone up, and you're going to see a bigger increase this year and into the following with sales tax going up. But we ultimately, our expenditures were around $22,396 in classroom site fund this year, and that included the expenses that were in their salaries for part of the, or the governor's 5%. And then also the amount they get for performance pay and the amounts is already based in their contract, about 7.6% that's in their contract. The Enrollment Stability Grant was a major change for this annual financial report compared to the past. We did have a piece of that in our last annual financial report. We spent in 1920, $7 million. We had done journal entries from our transportation department, community education, and our food service. That's why we had a bigger rollover in MNO. We moved some of those expenditures out. And then this year in 2021, we spent the rest of that, $6 million. And we had, most of that was in our online academy for salaries and benefits, and then also a small portion for our transportation expenditures. The SIR I and SIR II, we've completely spent both of those two funds, so they are completely cleaned up, finished and approved. The first one was on Chromebooks and HP Elite Books. We spent about $3.2 million for all of those. And then SIR II, we ended up taking indirect costs, and then we took other things out for PD that we had provided to our teachers prior to starting the year when we had to be all virtual at the very beginning of August in 2020. Also, summer school that was covered this last year. And then we moved our, some of our software costs out of there. And then the biggest expenditure was we moved all, a lot of our staff from the Chandler Online Academy into that since we hired over 100 people.
Lana, the indirect cost, what is that?
So indirect costs, each of our grants, you're able to pull out a portion for indirect costs. That's Fund 570, and you ultimately can pull that out, and you can cover costs that are throughout our district. It's anything from utilities to administration costs to everything that helps to deploy that grant in your district. Tax credit, one thing you're going to see is a major decrease in tax credit. You see that in 2019, 20, we had collected about $5.1 million, which was less than the year before, and partly due because COVID hit in March of 2020. So that was partly why we saw the decrease to, you know, right when the beginning of the pandemic. But last year, we saw a major decrease in that. And that was partly due to not having the extracurricular activities or the field trips and some of those things that the people were accessing. So that was a major decrease in our schools, and I think it's across Arizona.
You know, I know the state had a fairly large surplus. That tells me that a lot of the surplus came from the fact that tax credit was down so much.
Could be, could be a part of that, yeah.
Now it makes sense, okay.
Food nutrition is another form that you get. You get AFR just on food service. Jenny Bracamonte and her team have done an excellent job over the last year running food service. They've implemented universal free meals for everyone, curbside meals, intercession meals, along with doing all of it from the very beginning. The gentlemen and women who've been running that have been out there since day one of COVID, working curbside, working in the heat in the summer, and then serving all of our kids, universal meals. So done a great job with that. There's some details related to that if you want to go back and look through those details. But the other thing that's impressive is how many meals we served to our families through curbside, through intercessions, and just at school. The one thing we know is down is à la carte. So there's numbers on here to show how our breakfast numbers went up, how our lunch meals parts went up, and then how our à la carte has actually gone down because kids were purchasing items. But when universal free came into place, kids were receiving their breakfast and their lunch, and they weren't going to buy that à la carte item instead of substituting it for a meal. But we did an amazing job of serving a number of students throughout our community, if it was at here at school or if it was out in our community. And we're very, very happy with the service that we think we provided them this past year. So with that, revenues were up because as the universal free meals, the federal government reimbursed us for each one of those meals, and our revenue was up by $2.7 million last year. Expenditures were down overall, approximately $2.8 million compared to the previous year. Part of that was we didn't serve as many days in some of those capacities. So even though we were serving curbside and intercession, the actual number of days of 180 were a little bit different on that.[1706.61] the actual number of days of 180 were a little bit different on that. We didn't, since we didn't start school until September for our elementaries and October for our high schools. The ending cash balance is up $500,000, but with that, we also moved $3.1 million into indirect costs for food and nutrition, which has been fantastic. We're going to be doing a remodel at Hamilton High School this next year, and then a remodel at our central kitchen within the next year to two years with Frank Fletcher's team, and we'll use that money from indirect costs to pay for that. So we are very happy with the progress that we've made in food and nutrition, and the money that we're building up in that account, we will be able to do our renovations to over the next handful of years. The guarantee for Airmark, we use and we outsource Airmark. It's been a great partnership for us. The guarantee was a return of $2.1 million. We surpassed that by a lot last year. It was almost up to $4 million. That was incredible for us. We were able, like I said, move money into indirect costs. We'll be able to do a lot of great things to our campuses with those additional revenues. So again, our balance now is at $4 million. And then in indirect cost, we also have a huge chunk that we have set aside. So we're very happy with that. Great increase in participation, offering services in a lot of different fashions to meet our students' needs, and then being able to manage that cost and labor and supplies. Our food service department did a great job of really getting ahead of the supplies. A lot of districts had a difficult time with supplies. Our warehouse and our team over there did a great job getting in supplies and making sure we always had food for our students. So they did a great job. The Auditor General's report will come out in February, but we always like to do a comparison of the Auditor General's report. We kind of come up with our numbers of what we think it'll look like. It won't be exact when it comes out, but we do an estimate of that. In 1920, we spent 61% in the classroom. We think it'll be really close again at 61.7%. Administration costs, and as you all know, our administration costs in Chandler is something we're very proud of, that they're extremely low. And compared to the nation, we, I think Arizona is one of the very lowest non-administration costs. We're at 8.3%. And our district is at, again, this year will be at 8.1%, which is less than the state average and way less than the national average. So very proud of that fact. Operational costs were down, but part of that was a little journal entry, of course, related to E-Rate. So that, we're approximately the same on operational costs, slightly down partly because we didn't have students for a short period of time. So you're not having to heat your buildings, quiet or cool your buildings quite as much during that period of time when we were closed. Food service is up, but that's partly because of all the meals that we're serving and how we had to serve those with packaged meals. Transportation was slightly down overall and the percentage-wise, and partly because we weren't out during those first, that first month as much. And then the rest are approximately the same. It's very similar to where it was the year before. We use this in Journey 2020 as a measurement tool for us, so it's extremely important. So to wrap up a little bit about the financial health of our district, it's extremely important for us to be financially stable. And we need to make sure that with our carryover budgets, we have particular funds in those. That's extremely important, just like it is with the savings account with you at home, so that you're prepared for when a COVID happens. We were able to deploy expenditures in capital and M&amp;O without even knowing that we were going to get federal funds, and we were able to do that because we had reserves. And so it's extremely important for us for the future, depending on where our ADM heads, and then also depending on what takes place as we all just went through a worldwide pandemic. Federal and state funds, extremely important for us to apply for those, which we have. We've taken advantage of that. Today, we just got found out, just this afternoon, that we got funded for $6 million for our connectivity grants. So we'll be providing more computers. That's from the Universal Library Division. We're extremely excited about that. But we're constantly applying for grants and trying to maximize those as best possible. We just want to make sure we're as prepared as possible and that we never turn money back, that we can carry that, those dollars forward and impact our students in the future. Classroom dollars spent in the classroom is extremely important. We're at 74%. That's always a goal for us, approximately. But we, one of the main things that's important for us is to have one of the highest in the entire state, and we are, besides a couple smaller districts. And then Gilbert, Gilbert and us usually go back and forth but have the highest amount spent in the classroom. Low administration cost is critical for our district. It's something we're very proud of, that we continue to have low administrative expenses, lower than our peer groups, and lower than the state, lower than the national average. So extremely important. Capital planning is very important at this point. Colleen Flannery and her team are putting together an assessment related to our technology to implement great technology and a plan for us over the next handful of years. And then along with Frank Fletcher and his team as we plan out the renovations of our 5.5 million square feet. So extremely important to make sure that we have funds ready and available as we go to renovate those facilities. So the 2019 bond has been extremely helpful as we've been not only adding schools, but now as we start to go into the renovation phase. Maintaining our market share is probably the most important thing, I think, because as we knew, 90% of our budget is salaries and benefits out of maintenance and operations. So our most important thing is to maintain those salary schedules so that we can attract quality teachers that our families value, that our communities expect. So that's extremely important to stay marketable in retaining them and attracting them in the future. And then our partnerships, it's extremely important for us to continue our partnerships. We have a great partnership with the city of Chandler, the town of Gilbert, and the town of Queen Creek. We operate libraries together, pools together, and so that's extremely important. We have had an override in place now for three decades, and so that's a big portion of our dollars. We have that coming up on our November 2 election. That's been a big piece of us being able to do a number of these things that are up there, retain students, our teachers and staff to be able to have manageable class sizes and to have safe and secure schools, big part of that financial health of our district. The last thing I just want to kind of finalize on is every decision we make, we try to stem back to our Journey 2025, which is our strategic goals. One of the pillars of the four in the strategic plan for Journey 2025 is maxim, or is effective resource management. Two pillars underneath that are maximizing financial resources and optimizing human resources. Both of those are extremely important, and we want to have as stable finances as we can. I was lucky that I came after Joel Worth and a number of people in the business office and a number of great administrators who have came before me that have really done a great job managing our finances. And so we are in a great spot for Chandler Unified School District, and it's our job to continue that for the future because the future, our kids are going to do some great things. And also, we want to make sure we have amazing employees. We have 5,000, over 5,000 employees who work extremely hard every single day. And we value what they do. We want the best ones, we want to retain them, and we want to attract them because we feel like we're the best district in the state. So ultimately, our goal is to make sure every financial decision aligns back with that. All right, do you have any questions for me?
Are there any questions from the board?
I had one, and I may should have asked it before. You, back at the beginning of this, we spoke a little bit about Indian gaming and contributions that we get from the, from the gaming all over the state. With the new gaming that's going on, the online gaming and all that, is there any of that revenue that's going to come toward public schools?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I will find that answer out and let you know. I hope so. But the current gaming dollars that we have, there, we get about $40 per student for gaming, and that's from our casinos. But I do hope that we receive more because that would be huge. Indian gaming gets spent on dropout prevention, teacher compensation, instructional improvement. So that would be fantastic for us. So I'll find that out and get back to you on that.
I got a second question that's unrelated to that. The, so we pay interest on our bonds. What does the interest on our bonds been doing to us lately?
So we have, it's been amazing. It's been extremely low. So that's why when we were able to strategize, the interest is less than 2%, I believe, or right around 2%. It's fantastic.
That was all I could think of.
Great question, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olive. Are there any other questions?
I need a couple.
Yes, Mr. Worth.
Lana, in the food service, when it says management fee, that's a little misleading, isn't it? Isn't that the people they pay for?
So their contract is different than originally, like their contract, we pay them based on the amount of meals that they provide. We give them a dollar amount per meal. So there's an amount per meal, it's a fixed cost. And so within that dollar amount, they've built in their costs. They have approximately five people who work for the management company. For example, our Ginny Bracamonte, the finance person that's in their office, the chef and one of the supervisors. That's built into their costs. But how we strategize that contract is we reimburse them per meal, a certain amount per meal that we serve in our district. So we don't pay them a separate administration fee. We negotiate an amount per meal, and then they can receive a certain amount off of every single meal that is used in our district. And that's how that contract is set up.
You lost me, to be honest with you. So $7 million covered, I'm assuming salaries and food?
No, okay, so great question, sorry. So they purchase the supplies. We pay for the, all of the employees except for five employees. All of our employees are our Chandler Unified School District employees. However, Airmark purchases the supplies because they're a $19 billion company. And so their ability to get supplies at a discounted rate for food is drastically different than what Chandler Unified can purchase their food cost for. So they ultimately pay for all of the supplies related to food and the non-food items that are used in our food service. So we reimburse them through a meal cost. So how that gets reimbursed is based on every meal that we sell, we reimburse them a certain amount per meal that includes their own costs plus the supply costs. And so that's how we reimburse them. So we don't pay for any supplies in our district related to food service.
So you had an earlier screen that indicated, I think they made $2 million?
So our district ultimately, revenues were up, and then expenditures were down. But ultimately, we increased our ending balance by $500,000, and we did a journal entry over $3.1 million into indirect costs. So together, when you add those two numbers up, it's over $3.6 million that we ultimately made.
No, you had a number there, it was $2,104,000.
I think, so that is the guarantee. So Airmark guaranteed us that we would make at least $2.1 million. We superseded that amount last year.
Okay. Kind of back to Jason's question, I couldn't find gaming in the annual financial report.
So that's going to be Fund 020 on your, and I didn't bring one up here in your gaming report. That, I believe, I can pull the page number when I go over to my computer to show you. But that is in, I want to say page, maybe it's page, it's not page 2. But I can pull that for you, Mr. Worth, afterwards.
Since we're already, since we'll be reviewing this again as an action item, maybe we can, you can get prepared to answer that question while we're doing the other parts of the meeting.
The exciting stuff, Barb.
I know, I know. Your favorite.
I'm done, sorry.
Are there any other questions, Mrs. Brunner?
So I was wondering if you could explain just a little bit, or if someone else can possibly, about the need for deans. I went to a lot of campuses, and there was discussion by the teachers and administration about that. And I was wondering if you could explain why there was an increase in deans.
Sure, and I apologize, I think it was assistant principals. But, Mr. Narducci, would you like to explain? We improved, we increased our assistant principals two years ago.
Could you repeat the question? I didn't really.
So the increase in the levels under the principal at the sites and what the need for that was?
Correct. We, Mrs. Brunner, we, a few years back, we did an analysis of some of the things that were happening on campuses and how we could support that a little bit more. So principals' time was effectively used in instruction and working with their entire staffs. And so we worked with a formula base, which we always had done to provide deans, which are not on the administrative contract, but they're on a specialized contract and work the, pretty much a separate calendar. So we increased the number at schools that had no representation and no assistance, and those that had .5 if they qualified by their enrollment or by specialized program. A weight was given to school sites that have severe programs that might provide more opportunities for students to need to be engaged with, school personnel, and families that would need to be reporting out. And so we went with a formula-based provision for support at those schools. And so that also comes in, and it's effective when your formula meets your school needs, but it also gets reduced when your formula, if you have school reduction numbers in enrollment, then you'll see a shift the other way, too. So we've had some of our sites saw a shift down in their staffing this year based on our students that we did lose at the beginning of this year. And so Mr. Schlitter worked with the sites to make sure that those were staffed. As far as the assistant principal roles, those are assigned at elementary based on the size of the school. And our larger schools have assistant principals under the role of principal, but they don't have a dean, and they assume those roles. All of these positions are also training positions, developmental positions, to assist our people also when we have principal openings to be able to apply for those as well. Mostly at the elementary, we have deans with a few, a handful, right, Mr. Schlitter, of assistant principals right now?
Correct.
Three total?
We have four.
Four total?
Four total assistant principals at the elementary level.
And our junior highs have one assistant, correct? And a dean, is that correct?
They either have two assistant principals, depending on the size of the school, or an assistant principal and a dean.
Did that answer your question, or?
Yeah, I just wanted it to be shared publicly, like what that was about.
I really, if I can be totally honest, I don't like the formula. But, you know, we have to be able to provide supports based on our ADM that's coming in as well. And we'll currently, we'll consistently review that because we know all of our sites ask for more support. And again, it's so that our administrators aren't only tied down to the daily running of the school, which on a given day gets pretty arduous at times. Our kids do need behavior supports as well. Our counselors and social workers are working very hard as well. So we will continuously look at that and see where there's opportunities to be able to support students more at schools.
And I have heard that at some of the sites, they're sharing that, you know, the deans are doing a lot of work with students, maybe more than they were doing five or 10 years ago, or the job is shifting a little bit. So even though something may look like administration, it's really more student support in like practice.
And, Mrs. Brunner, I've had the opportunity to talk with some of my peers in the profession, whether it be West Valley, East Valley. We're seeing an uptick in just coming back from the last 20 months that students' behaviors are just a little bit, a little bit more coping. And we just need to be able to work with our students of how to resolve problems and coping skills that rather than, it's just, it's an uptick across, we're seeing across any of, both valleys. And our students just need more supports, and that's what we do in school every day. So I appreciate you noticing that as well. And we do hear from our principals, and I think everybody is asking just for assistance where it helps them to be able to evaluate instructional practices, work with teachers to coach, and make sure that our instructional programs are being delivered the way we want them to be as well. So I appreciate you, you know, discussing that as well.
Thank you. And then at some point, will there be a plan for community education to kind of look at what we're doing there? And, you know, maybe some surveys of families to see where we could head, get some ideas from other districts with innovative programs and throw out a survey so we can maybe pull that back up?
Absolutely, great suggestion. And we have a new director of community education, Stephanie Howell. She is, we love her, we love her energy. She is, we love her, we love her energy. She is going to start a lot of that. She's already started working on some of the early childhood stuff and then working to, she, her and her staff, Christina, did a great job of receiving grants in to help get some more services out to our schools. And you're going to see some of the S R money go out to some of our schools who have needs so they can have academic clubs. But definitely, we need to survey, I think, there's been a couple of you who've asked for that, so we will get some more surveys out to families. Great suggestion.
Thank you. My last question, you kind of just mentioned it. So I brought this up before, I'm sorry to be repetitive, but the use of a grant writer, and I know we kind of are using some folks that way, but I think that's vital for us because we get so much more back than what we spend on that. And to make it so that it's connected with the staff at the site, so that it's like, what, you know, maybe have a half hour with teachers and be like, you know, in a perfect world, where money wasn't a factor, what would you want to see happen? And then they can start looking for grants that fit what, you know, like kind of a bottom-up thing as well as a top-down thing would be wonderful. Because I think a lot of teachers don't even know what's out there, or they don't know how to write the grant, or, you know, they're just trying to keep their head above water, so they just go buy the stuff themselves, and maybe it doesn't become what it could be if we had all the resources for it.
Sure. No, great suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. I know we will be, we're starting to run short of time because we do have another part of our study session. We will be coming back to this during our action item, and if you think of more questions during the rest of the meeting, please write them down, and you'll be able to answer them when Mrs. Berry presents this as an action item. So our next part of our meeting is the demographic update. And Mrs. Berry, we'll go ahead and start with you on this again.
Sure. Madam President, members of the board, tonight, we have Rick Bramer and his staff with us to discuss our demography report. I have had the fortune of working with Rick since I've been here. This is my ninth year here, and I love his projections. He helps and guides us, plus he meets with all of us to discuss and understand why the numbers are what they are. And so his knowledge base is incredible. He is thought very highly of throughout our entire state, and we really, really appreciate his expertise. So I'm going to let him present his report to you, and then for you to be able to ask him questions when he's finished.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
President Mazdin, Vice President Olive, Mr. Narducci, members of the governing board, and our guests tonight. It is a pleasure for us to be here to present the results of our demographic report. I know that we're running a little bit short on time, and so I'm going to try to talk as fast as Lana Berry, which I know I can't, but I'm going to give it a shot anyway, and we'll see how much of this we can get through. So I just wanted to hit the high points as much as possible. It is important to understand what we actually do. So our study scope includes, obviously, examining enrollment data every which way we can, not only just totals and grade level distributions in schools and so forth, but also the geographic distribution, in and out of the district, and how that relates to the housing stock and all those other things. So very detailed analysis of that. Unfortunately, now, whether we want to or not, we're also in the business of tracking what's happening with the alternative providers, primarily the charter schools, because that obviously has a direct impact on our enrollment projections. The demographic characteristics of the population. Even though there's still some growth happening in the district, it's becoming more and more about what the characteristics of the existing population is, and that it's aging in place, I'll tell you that. And so it's now, again, having a major impact on our enrollment. And the impact is looked at through types of households, age holders of households, and then our housing supply, and, you know, the availability and price of that housing supply. Don Graves with our office is our residential development expert. He does the tracking of all of the construction projects. He talks to the builders, he talks to the people who buy and sell land, and we try to stay in front of, about what's going to be built and when. And Don does an excellent job at that. We roll all that information together into two models. I do a macroeconomic top-down, how does Chandler School District fit into the East Valley, and how does that fit into Arizona, and all the major sort of macro trends that are driving us. And then we do a second model, which is a bottoms-up, where we take the, I guess we don't have a map in here, but there's, we've divided the district up into 316 planning grids. They're a quarter square mile each, you probably may have seen the map. We didn't create it, it's been around for a long time. But we actually do a small area projection model that does the projections at that 316 square level. And then we add those up, and we compare the two answers. And a lot of times, we make adjustments based on what one model is telling us versus another. So we'll kind of start at the beginning, back over with long-term enrollment trends, where here you see the blue bars, our 40th-day headcount. We don't use ADM, it's a little different measurement, but you can see the 40th-day headcount numbers, you know, accelerating, 77% growth during the decade of the 2000s, gained over 16,000 students, and then an additional 7,300 students through 1920. And then, of course, as we've been talking, the, you know, the big losses that occurred last year with COVID, and the loss of around 1,800 or so students last year. And one of the big issues with our projections this year for everybody was, how many of those might we get back? And a lot of people budgeted on zero, which is probably a smart thing to do, and we've seen the gambit, a little bit of what's happened there. In higher SES areas, we're finding that, basically, people did not come back. And that was confirmed by the fact that your enrollment this year is only up by about 28 students over last year. Whereas in some other districts where students are more dependent on the transportation of the districts and so on and so forth, we saw them get back 70 to 80% of the students that they had lost. So this was a big wild card in all of our projections this year, and one that we hope we don't have to repeat again too soon. This one, this chart takes the total enrollment, but it breaks it down into grade groups. So this is the average enrollment per grade in the grade groups. And so what you see is that K-2 group, you know, during growth periods, when you're really building new houses, that tends to be the largest group. And then as the rate of growth begins to decline, and people begin to age, those lines cross. And so now we see the K-2 group is by far the smallest of the four groups. And we also see the disproportionate impact that COVID had on that group and the 3-5 group last year. And they did manage to tick up a little bit this year from where they were last year, but very little compared even to the trend that they had been on. And something more new is that now we're seeing the declines that we have been experiencing in the lower grades creep up to the middle schools. And we're starting to see those curves flatten. And of course, the next thing that's going to happen four or five years from now is we're going to start to see high school enrollment top out. And because the amount of housing, even though it's pretty substantial, it just isn't, it doesn't compare to the 100,000 housing units that are already built, and the people that are already in all of those housing units. And we talked about doing things bottom up, so we look at not only totals, of course, but the actual distribution of students. So every dot on this map is a child enrolled in the Chandler Unified School District. As you can see, the dots go outside the district. We have dots all over the East Valley, we have dots halfway to Tucson. But there's nearly 5,900 dots outside of the district, about 13.3% of enrollment. And that's relatively, you know, high. There's a couple of other districts that have those kinds of rates of importation, but it's a testament. It's a testament to people wanting to be here, it's a testament to your schools, it's a testament to everything that you've done right up until now. And it's really is, it really is an amazing thing. Inside the district, we aggregate those little dots up, and we look at how many students we're actually getting out of each one of these planning grids, we call them, each one of the 316 boxes. And some places, like down in Sun Lakes and where it's industrial, you won't have any, of course, there's no students at all. But even where there is, you know, the actual number of K-12 students, even in a fully developed area, can vary quite a lot, depending on the characteristics of the housing and the characteristics of the population. And we use all of that, of course, in trying to do boundary planning and so forth. And just as a reference, we've overlaid on here, it says elementary AA, so those are current elementary attendance areas, so what kids go to which schools. We just put that in there kind of as a reference. And so while that's useful, you know, what we're focusing on more for the projections is looking at the trends. So since we've been doing this a while, we can look at the period from 2015 to 2019, so pre-COVID, and see that we had areas that were already in decline in the district. Anything that's colored blue, enrollment declined during that period. And that is two things, that's the aging of the population and charter schools. And if you look at where the deepest blues are, and look at where the charter schools are, it's kind of the same map. But we see a lot of growth still, particularly in the southeast corner of the district, and there is a lot of land there along that, which quarter, is that Velvista Drive? Yeah. Yeah. But anyway, the two years now, since 1920 to today, to 2122, we've lost the 1,800, they didn't come back. And so basically, almost the entire map is blue. And there's two things interesting about it, I guess, and one is that there isn't a real, there isn't a real distinct pattern. It looks, the actual loss was pretty much spread evenly throughout the district, there weren't big pockets. And the only places on here where you see any red at all is where houses or a major apartment complex was being built during that period of time. That's really the only places that where any gains were experienced at all. Underneath what's driving that is, of course, the demographics of our population. So total population of the district, now this is actually 2020 census, this is a less-than-a-month-old number, of 276,931 people. We had estimated for the district last year, what we thought the 2020 population was, and we said 276,708. So we were off by a grand total of 200 people on a base of 56,000 growth during that period. So that's basically luck, when you get that close in my business. What was different was that particularly the population, well, all the population under 18, which is all we know from the census so far, we don't, under 18 and over 18, we don't know any other age breakdown. But the population under 18, based on what we could get from birth rates and the American Community Survey, we had estimated at about 73,000 persons. So that's all persons living in the district under the age of 18, whether they go to your school or any school. And the number actually came in at 69,700. So almost 3,000 less in the school-age population, even though the total population was right on the money. And so that's one of the things that is impacting our projections, being a little lower going forward, is understanding that. And this kind of, you know, there's a lot of data up here, obviously, but we're really concerned about the 0 to 4 and the 5 to 13 age groups. That's what's going to drive enrollment going down the road. And so you can see that it kind of held its own between 2000 and 2010, from 22 and 1/2 to 22%, 22.2%, but a big drop in this decade. And even kind of scarier for the future is looking at that under 4 population, and, you know, falling to 6.5% of the total. And of that, effectively, of that 56,000 increase we had in a decade, only 930 would be preschoolers. So it really is changing the overall age structure of the population, and that tends to be driven by these guys, because it's the householders that are aged 25 to 34 and 35 to 44 who have the kids. And so you can look back in the year 2000, almost half of the households in the school district fell into those two age categories. So guess what? You get a lot of kids. And that started to wane even earlier. We saw that wane by 2010, and now even by 2020, falling even more, to the point where, you know, again, it's what's driving the fact that school-age population isn't increasing.
Rick, so that's probably true in Mesa then, true, right?
Excuse me? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So that's probably true in Mesa.
Oh, yes, it definitely.
Same thing happened there, right?
Same thing happened there. Same thing happened in Gilbert, too. Yeah, this isn't, this isn't unique, you know, by any stretch. But what we're seeing, the manifestation of it, is in the birth rates. And so during the Great Recession, from about 2005 or '06 through 2011, birth rates in Arizona, the red line, dropped by about 19%. The number of births dropped by 17%. There's a little bit of population growth, right? And then it went flat for about three years. And in American history, every time there's been a drop like this in the birth rate, the economy recovers, it goes back up. And so when it flattened, we were all expecting, you know, maybe a slight rise after this period, and exactly the opposite has happened. It's gone down by another 16 and 1/2% in the rate, another, almost 12% in the number of births. So the compound rate is down now almost 33%, a third. So we have a third less kids coming in the system. And we take what year those births are, and down at the bottom of the chart, right along here, you'll see where it says kindergarten. So it'll lag that to, well, when will those kids get to kindergarten? And so right now, with the data we have in hand, which is the births through 2020, 21 should be out any day, we know that, all things equal, we're going to have a smaller pot of students coming at us all the way through 2025, just on what we know today. We talked a little bit about the alternative providers and the impact that that's had on us. There are 18 charter schools operating in the district, there's six more within a mile. And since we don't know, we don't have the data to say how many of those kids are yours. We just look at the schools that are located in your district and close by and track that over time. And by their locations, this is just showing the numbers, but there's a map and the report shows where they all are. But the fact of the matter is, in this 10-year period, their enrollment, you know, the number of schools increased from 14 to 24, their enrollment increased from 4,500 to 11,500. So they effectively gained 7,000 students, while the district gained 5,500. So, you know, in fact, they, you know, basically got more kids than you did over the last decade. And that's pretty much been true statewide. Enrollment in district schools statewide has not increased since 2010. It's all, all of the margin is accounted for by what's been gained in the charter schools. That's, and then that's true statewide. In addition to that, you of course do have a few private schools, there's 12 of those that are serving about 2,400 students in the district. So you add those two, that 2,400 onto the 11,500, and you're looking right around 14,000-ish or so students that are in different, in different schools other than yours. And we'll get back to what that means in a minute, but Don's going to talk a little bit about what's going on with residential development.
In this first chart, the blue bars, or the blue part of the bars, is single-family housing, and the orange is multifamily. And what we have over the last 10 years has been about 19,000 new housing units permitted, and about 37% have been multifamily. The other thing you probably want to notice on this particular chart is related to the fact that the district is running out of large development parcels.
Don, is this everywhere or just in the district?
This is just in the district. Yes. So since the district is running out of large development parcels, one of the things that's happening now and is going to continue to happen is you're going to get more and more multifamily development, because you can get, you know, a lot of units on smaller parcels of land, and as the district gets more densely populated, you're going to have more multifamily development. The other thing you'll notice on this particular chart, on the blue bars, is the blue bars keep jumping up and dropping and jumping up, and they, they're shifting around. And part of the reason, and in fact, probably most of the reason, is because lacking large development parcels, what you have in the district is small developments, subdivisions with 50 lots, 100 lots. They start, they build, and these blue bars, you know, jump up, they build out rapidly. Instead of a large development that builds a certain number of houses year after year, you're going to have these smaller projects that are going to pop up and build out in a year or two years. So you're going to have this unevenness going on with the, with the single-family development. And you see, with the building permits here, the green markers are permits in 2020, we've had a spike in permits in 2020 with new subdivisions starting up, especially at Azure Point and Waterston. But you'll also see there's markers all over the district. And this, again, partly, you're going to have these small developments popping up here, there, and everywhere. You've got a fair amount of rural development in the far southeast corner of the district. So you have quite a bit of development that's scattered, you know, pretty much all over through the district. Now, the residential potential, we've got about 15,000 units in developments that could become active in the next 10 years, not build out, but start to become active, and about half of multifamily. And the thing that somebody's going to ask me about, at least if it was me, I would ask me, is in the second to the right, we see the blue bars, which, again, is single-family, with a really large orange multifamily bar, and then nothing in the last column. What this is, is partly it's because of the way we store the records, because as we get away from projects that are already being brought up, we kind of know there's going to be multifamily in certain areas. We don't have the timing down very well until we get closer to where it's actually going to happen. And also, since this district is running out of land, we have a certain amount of potential that we are assuming that'll come from redevelopment and repurposing of land, but we don't have any way to map it because we don't know exactly where it's going to be. And this has come up before, where I put a, put a part on the map, and it's on top of the shopping center that somebody goes to, and they're going to be upset. So this large orange bar, where it says 3791, assume that about half of that actually belongs in the next column, there's just not any good way for us to, to do that. The land use here, the pale yellow is single-family, and orange is multifamily. And what you'll see, again, as we've mentioned, we've got these parcels scattered all over the district, but the only large parcels are over in the far east, or the southeast The development timing map, red indicates projects that are already active, orange indicates stuff that's coming online within the next, you know, one to three years, and then, you know, the lighter yellow is a little farther off. If you look at Waterston over here, this red here is the part that's under construction right now. This orange, towards the northern part of that project, is what we expect, or is what's planned to be the next section of that development that comes online, and the parcel that's in between is going to be a little later on. So what we have is this stuff, you know, we've got these small parcels all over the district, but the large parcels are like Waterston, Canopy, that's next door, Lennar Homes has a project over, over just north of the Dora Trails on Greenfield, that's, it's dark orange now, it's actually open now. So those projects are large, they're building, and after that, you really don't have any large development parcels, except these large ones, one up here in the north, and another one straight to the south, both owned by the same property owner. There has been interest in that property, but the city of Gilbert is not going to be very supportive of having this developed piecemeal. They're going to want it developed as a master-planned community, which will make things a little slower. So we don't expect anything to happen in those large parcels for another three to five years, or maybe longer. But after that, the district really doesn't have any other large parcels other than the Susuma Estates, clear in the far eastern area, which won't be, won't be developed probably until pretty late in the projection period. And we can go to Rick to explain what that translates into.
Thank you, Don. So we're anticipating that about 12,000 of those 15,000 or so potential housing units that we know about will actually get built over the next 10 years. That will drive the, you know, the population of the district, well over 300,000 people. It'll add about 10,700 households, that's an occupied housing unit. And then what we do is we, we structure that increase in households or the change in householders by those age categories that showed you on the other chart, in order to translate the number of households into school-age populations. So school-age population, in this case, is persons aged 5
So school age population, in this case, is persons aged five to 17 who live in the district, whether they go to your school or any school. It's the total population, five to 17. And so the actual 2020 census number was 51,797, based on, on that estimate. We had total enrollment, this is again head count, a little different number than maybe you've seen last year, 43,954 students. However, 5,807 of those were from outside of the district, which means that from within the district, we enrolled 38,157 students out of 51,797, which gives you this in-district ratio, or what people fondly call the capture rate, of about 73.7%. So it's saying that you're serving about 74% of the school age population living in your district. And the difference is, guess what, 14,000, which is exactly what the charter schools and the private schools added up to. And it's not exactly that clean, but it definitely does explain why there is a margin. We also do look at, though, that ratio in terms of the total, not just the in-district, but the total, because bringing in 5,800 students from outside the district is not something that everybody does. And so your, these capture rates, particularly the, the total, are much higher than most districts are experiencing. Your net rate, even at 73%, is definitely above average, but at 84% your total rate is way above average. But one of the biggest unknowns that we have in doing-
Quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Why does the, why does the school age population per household kind of steadily drop in all of these?
Because our population is aging.
Okay.
Basically, I mean, that's, that's the way to think about it. So that's, and that's what's been driving us, as you can see. I mean, think about what Don said, there's been 19,000 housing units added in the last, in the last decade, and we've only gained about 8,000, you know, school-aged persons out of all of that.
Some of that's got to do with pricing, doesn't it?
A lot of it has to do with pricing. It's all indirect, it's all part of the equation for sure, but right now, and I think it says it on my last slide, is that there's no such thing as really truly entry-level housing, you know, available in the district. And so we see places like Maricopa, you know, attracting those young families. That's where, that's where the elementary kids are primarily showing up at. But going forward with our projections, one of the biggest puzzles is how does this trend go over time? Because it's been 80%, 70%, 77%. Last year took this big hit because of COVID, and then it didn't come back, and we're at 73%. So in one of the projection scenarios, we, we actually do three scenarios. One, if it keeps going down. One, if it stabilizes at 73%, which is kind of your goal, and then kind of a midpoint to give us an idea of what that really means. So you see that here. So depending on how that capture rate goes, the school age population projection is the same in all three scenarios. The only wild card we really have is the choice part, how many parents are going to choose to come to your schools? And that's what this reflects. But even, even if the capture rate were to stay where it is today, at 73%, the district's enrollment would not increase at all over the next 10 years. It would be a break even. If we continue on the trend line that we've been on with the capture rate, we could potentially lose 2,500 students over the next 10 years. And then I basically do a midpoint of that, just to, just to have the, kind of the most likely line, although in our discussions, we've decided that looking at things right now, that probably the trend line is the safest one to really be considering. So we're, we are looking at future enrollment declines. And we do project that out also at the small area level. So the first four years of the projection period, lots of light blue, where you have continuing enrollment losses, particularly down in this area due to the aging of the population. This area up here is old enough, it's kind of aged out. These neighborhoods down here are still aging. And then the pockets along the Valvista corridor where we think developments are going to occur. And then the, the second five-year of the projection looks pretty much the same, although we're starting to see some revitalization of neighborhoods. This downward thing doesn't happen forever. Eventually, people sell their houses, and we'll start to see some families. And that should be happening up in the north by the second part of the projection period, while we still have losses here, other than, again, where we're getting impacts from new construction. All of this, as you can see, is overlaid, again, with the elementary attendance areas as point of reference. But it's also the fact that, what I project by this model is based on where kids live. And where people, what the administration needs to know is where they're going to go to school. And so in addition, one of the, one of the things that we're always dealing with, and there won't be any tests on this, on this slide, so, so, you know, don't get anxious. But the way you read this is that, is the interplay then, between where kids live and where they go to school. So if I were to read column one down, it would be all the kids who live in Anderson Elementary Attendance Area and where they go to school. So there's 499 students, not school age people, but actual students, living in that attendance area. And this is all the different schools they go to. If I read across, I can see that Anderson Elementary picks up 267 of its own, plus seven from Bologna, et cetera, and including clear out 52 from outside the district, to give it a total attendance of 454. Compared to how many live there, they actually lose 45 students. So when we're trying, so when we're doing our projections, we're taking it by where kids live, and then having to translate it over time into where they actually go to school. So this relationship between where they live and where they go to school is very important. And in districts that are doing well, that are offering the kind of choices you are, that means that only, in your case, 61% of the kiddos go to the school that they would be officially designated to go to, which is a wonderful thing from a retention standpoint, from a projection standpoint, from projected enrollment standpoint, it makes it pretty difficult. The good news is that these relationships are amazingly stable over time, unless you add a program or change a school. But the, the relationships are solid enough to allow us basically to convert the projections by attendance area into projections by school, which is what this chart would, would represent. So these are actual schools. We've got, you know, five or six years' worth of actual enrollment data here for all of the different schools. You can kind of see the ledge that we went over in 20, between 1920 and 2021, where pretty much, you know, every single school in the district, as we said, as we saw in the maps, those losses were fairly, were fairly widespread. Under this mid-scenario with the changing demographics, but with the, because of the acceleration of growth, of housing growth in the short term, we could see a minor increase in, in elementary enrollment over the next five years. Again, that's under the mid-scenario, not the low scenario. But no matter what we do with adding housing, by the time we get to the second five-year period, we're definitely in a lost situation, no, no matter what scenario that we look at with the elementary schools. And with the, with the, with the middle schools and high schools, kind of the same thing, although we didn't have nearly the negative impact in 2021 as we did in the elementary schools, but we see that negative, or that those smaller classes coming forward into the middle school level real strong over the next four years. And so, you know, pretty much nothing we can do but have losses at the middle school level in the next four years. And then that creeps in basically to the high school level during the, during the second five years of the projections. And I'm just going to, not going into a lot of more detail on that, but we could certainly discuss that, you know, all the, the actual numbers at length more maybe later. I just want to get, get wrapped up here. So our conclusions are that, you know, in our opinion at least, the district is likely to experience declines in enrollment, even though 12,000 housing units are going to be added. I know that's kind of a hard concept for some people to, to understand, but everything points to that. The demographic characteristics of the existing population are showing this shift to the older age groups, which is somewhat natural. People are staying in their housings longer, they're living longer. House prices, Board Member Worth mentioned, are keeping people in their houses right now, because you, you don't want to move because you can't afford to buy something else. So in a way, it's actually slowing down the turnover rate. We'd like to see more movement in the market. And the other thing we talked about was just the sheer lack, basically, of affordable, you know, entry-level housing. Young families like to buy new houses, and I don't know exactly why that is, but that's the way it is in Arizona. And so not having that option kind of takes you out of the game. We're, we're concerned that the future enrollment levels will continue to be impacted by additional alternative providers. We've been waiting for them to hit saturation, if you will, in some districts, and we are starting to see a little bit of that in some areas, but it's amazing to me, especially as the big, the big corporations have taken over, the Great Hearts and, and those that just continue to find new places to target and new angles to sell their product. You know, finally, I guess we're saying that if, you know, if, if that enrollment population ratio could remain where it is, then enrollment might stay about where it is over the next 10 years. But in all likelihood, that's going to slip, and we're going to see some sort of declines. And most of it's due to the aging of the population at this point, even more so than the alternative providers. So I know I kind of whirlwinded that, there's a lot of, a lot of information, a lot of numbers, but I'd be happy to take any questions from my side.
Thank you so much. Very, very informative. I think Mr. Worth has a question, too.
I just want to reemphasize that third paragraph. Future enrollment levels will be impacted by educational choices. We in the school district have got to do a better job in marketing. We're behind the curve. I know we're trying to get there. We need to spend the same levels the charters are. We've got a great story, and we need to tell it. And to me, we're already behind the curve. We need to fight for that third paragraph.
It is getting to be the most important factor now, since you're slowing down, so housing construction, it is the most important factor.
So as I look through your enrollment, enrollment projections, shall we say, on slide number 18?
Sure.
And for 21, 22, the out-of-district is showing 58, 67. But when you compare that to our, all those little green dots, that we are drawing a lot of other children out from other districts-
5,900 total, yes.
Yes. Now, but I guess the question is, how many from our district are going to other surrounding districts rather than charters?
Well, we know that 14,000 school age persons in the district are not coming to you. We don't have the information from the state to tell us exactly where they are going.
Okay, and you don't do demographic work for some of our surrounding districts?
I do work for all of your surrounding districts, but we try not to share information unless everyone's playing that game.
I see. Okay, so, so you can, but you can't give an estimate as to how many are going to surrounding districts versus charter schools?
Versus charter schools? I could probably come up with one, but I would hate to quote anything right now off the top of my head.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
It wouldn't be a good thing for me to estimate.
I appreciate it. Are there any other questions?
Madam President, I just have a comment. Rick and Don, thank you so much. I mean, I know we wanted to get this information, because we do a lot of planning based on our demographers report and our enrollment report. But I was glad you hit that one slide of the choice programs within Chandler that a lot of our students do go to with other schools than their boundary for. And that makes it real difficult when we start looking at boundaries, when we have to look at shifts in school attendance zones based on capacities or under capacities, because the students don't normally sit in their little square grid mile of attendance boundary. And so that one chart up there, the residents versus attendance, it's great to know where kids go and where they wind up, but it's also nice to see that many of our kids are going to specialized programs across the district, maybe specialized programs of focus, as well as services that they may need that may need, may not be at one school. But that, that makes it hard and difficult when we, when we start to do boundaries, and that's why we do them so much earlier, is to see where our kids really are in that number, so that we can make those projections over, over five to 10 years, you know, rather than making a, a boundary change, and then all of a sudden, we have to change that back a year or two later because, oops, we kind of missed that target. I think you also saw that a lot of the growth is off of Valvista, and that will continue to be so even when the Zinke properties have sold. But we projected out for those properties in those schools when we did our boundaries for elementaries as well. And so there's schools waiting to capture that growth rate. And marketing's very important for us to get our product out there in those areas as they're being developed, and principals will be doing that and are doing that as the housing market is starting to increase in that area, especially around Rice Elementary School. And eventually in Sausman on the very far side, you were talking about the Ogsier area, which is on Power Road, and that could be an area when Sausman Farms actually starts building around the school. So fortunately, that growth will be right around the school that already serves that community. So again, really important that we take our plans now and come back to you toward the end of the year with some significant capital planning for, for the years to come here. This is essential for us to start with, so that we know where our projected growth is and what our increases are and our declines are over time and what our neighborhoods look like. So I appreciate both of the work that you've done here. I know we've been with you for quite a few days, and I know you have more meetings to go through with our, with our staff, so that they'll really understand it as we make decisions moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming out this evening and, and giving us all this great information.
I appreciate the opportunity to share the story. Thank you.
We will take about a three or four-minute break and reconvene at, for our regular board meeting at 7:00 PM.